I'd like to call the August 6, 2019, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone, please rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again for being with us this evening. At our last county commission meeting, we welcomed one of our new Assistant County Managers, Sybil Tate, to her new role in Buncombe County. And before we begin our meeting this evening, I would like to also welcome DaKeisha Wesley, who is with us this evening, who is our other new Assistant County Manager. DaKeisha has served as the Assistant Administrator for Lake County, Illinois. She brings 19 years of experience in local government, including her work for Lake County, and 12 years working in the community of Fort Worth, Texas. DaKeisha, we are so glad to have you as part of our management team here in Buncombe County, and we are really looking forward to working with you. So, welcome. Before we begin our meeting this evening, let's take a moment to acknowledge the value of all of the people who have public service as their calling. We appreciate our teachers, and all the people who make our schools work each day, our law enforcement, firefighters, and other first responders who protect homes and lives, the people who help make sure that our social safety network, our social safety net, works for the children, the elderly, and families, and to all the other people who show up for work each day to work for our community. Let's have a moment of silence for prayer and reflection for the many public servants who make Buncombe County a better place to live. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. I'd like to quickly review the ethics reminder for the Board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Are there any items on the agenda the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at this meeting. All right. Commission, we have a closed session matter that we need to attend to, and we need to do it at the front of the meeting, as Ron Payne has a family obligation that would prevent him from being with us at the back end of our meeting. So, we need to have a motion to go into closed session to consult with an attorney. Ms. Hockaday, do you have the language for us?
Yes. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body.
So moved.
Second.
All right, there's a motion, a second. We do not expect this to be a very long closed session, so we expect to be back pretty quick, and we'll go back into open session when we come back. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're in closed session. All right. Is there a motion to go back into open session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're back into session. All right, the next order of business is to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, are you going to move that one item?
So, on my agenda, it's actually next up.
Okay.
So, I think it is, I think we're there. Which is to consider the recommendation on hiring of the Internal Audit Director. Yeah, that's, yeah. Okay, but before we go there, I did neglect to announce that there are parking validation. If you use the county's parking deck or transit to attend this meeting, you can get validation for your parking pass or transit pass from one of the officers who was at the meeting this evening, so feel free to see them on the way out. That's valid for today only. All right. Next up on the agenda is consideration to hire a new Internal Audit Director, and Larry Harris, who is the Chair of the Audit Committee, is here to explain this item. Larry, thank you for being with us.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm coming as Chair of the Audit Committee, and just to remind you of, and the public, as to why I'm here, and that is because our Director of Internal Audit, Terry Orange, moved over to Finance, and so left a vacancy that we needed to fill. And then I would also remind both you all and the public that under the Internal Audit Charter, the organization of the internal audit function is such that, and I'm reading directly from the charter, that the Internal Audit Director reports administratively to the county manager, and with clear and recognized access and reporting to the Buncombe County Commissioners and the Audit Committee. And so, in order to honor that organizational structure, the committee agreed with our county manager on a process by which we would select a candidate to bring to you this evening, and for you to consider for the next Director of Internal Audit. And so, the process was this, that the county manager would work with HR to post the position, to start the process, and with that, there were 11 qualified candidates, one withdrew from consideration. The remaining 10 candidates, and again, this is, as approved by the Audit Committee and delegated over to the county manager to go through this agreed-upon process, the remaining 10 were phone interviewed by a four-person panel that was comprised of the county manager, Dan Warren, and two members of HR. So, that was your four-member panel, and the highest-scored candidates were invited with interviews with the Audit Subcommittee, and I would remind you that that Subcommittee is your two Commissioners who serve, Commissioner Presley and Whiteside, and the Chair of the Committee comprises the Internal Audit Subcommittee. And so, the Subcommittee then, with the county manager, with a representation from HR, interviewed the two top candidates, and we selected one of those candidates and took that candidate to the full committee. At the full committee, we did a Skype interview, and the committee voted by a majority vote, unanimous vote, I believe, although we had one member absent, to make recommendation to the Commissioners for a new Internal Audit Director, that would be Tricia Burnett. Tricia was born and raised in Asheville. She received her undergraduate degree in accounting from UNCA, her master's degree in accounting from Western Carolina, so she covers all the required bases for higher education in Buncombe County. She holds CPA licenses in North Carolina and Oregon, and is, as well as the International Certified Internal Auditor Certification and the Certified Fraud Examiner Certification. Tricia spent most of her career in public service in Western North Carolina. She worked the majority of her time with the NC Office of the State Auditor, with audit responsibilities over state universities, community colleges, and clerks of Superior Court. She also served as the Director of Internal Audit for UNC Asheville. For the past four and a half years, she has lived in Eugene, Oregon, drawn to the opportunity of helping to create the University of Oregon's first-ever Office of Internal Audit. She currently leads a team of four staff that includes three audit professionals and a support professional. She developed a partnership with the College of Business, provide opportunities for students to learn and work in the internal audit field. Her goal is to integrate internal audit into everyday operations of any organization she works with, including and giving the opportunity to do so in Buncombe County. She strongly believes in partnering, collaborating, and communicating with those she works with, as well as leveraging all resources possible to ensure the best practices are in place that allow the mission and objectives of Buncombe County to be met. So, with that, I submit to you, Tricia Burnett, for your consideration for the next Director of Internal Audit.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Harris. Appreciate all the work that went into going through this search process for this important position. Terry Orange, of course, has done a great job, and has an important role in the organization. So, we appreciate the recommendation from the Committee.
Sure, thank you.
So, Commission, yes, sir. Thank you. The policy asks that the Buncombe County Commission consider the recommendations of the Internal Audit Committee, so we have received that recommendation. Is there a motion in response to the recommendation?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion? Further discussion?
Being a member of the Committee, a Subcommittee, we're fortunate to have someone of Tricia's caliber to move into the position as Internal Auditor, and in many ways, one, she's a graduate of the University of North Carolina at Asheville, and she's from here, so that gives us added, you know. But when you look at it, though, it was no comparison when we looked at the people as far as she's competent with her undergraduate degree and a master's in accounting, so she's by far from the ones we interviewed, I thought.
Great. Great. All right, any other comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Again, thank you very much, the work of everyone on the Audit Committee, for your work and recommendation for this position. She's not present with us right now.
No.
All right. Very good. Okay, the next item on our agenda is, we would like to, as a county commission, provide recognition to a really special person in our community, Mr. Gene Bell, for 25 years of service in our community, and so we have a resolution that we would like to present. So, I'd like to ask all the county commissioners to join us down at the podium, and ask Mr. Bell to please join us as well.
This is an easy one for me to read, because not only are Gene and I long-term friends over these years, but we're also neighbors, so I ask him not to give you any insight into some of our conversations in the past. I don't think he'd want to hear them. County of Buncombe proclamation honoring Gene Bell, whereas Gene Bell has been employed for 25 years as Director of Maintenance and Construction, and then Chief Executive Officer of the Asheville Housing Authority, and since 2005, Executive Director of the Brevard Housing Authority, and whereas Gene has left a positive mark on every tenant and employee of the Asheville Housing Authority, public and elected officials of Buncombe County, the City of Asheville, State of North Carolina, and U.S. Government officials, and whereas Gene continues to advocate and fight for all citizens of our community, and whereas Gene is committed to his involvement in the community, he has served on several boards, most recently the Asheville City School Board for eight years, where he served as Chairman for six years, the Board of Directors for the North Carolina Housing Authority Risk and Retention Pool, the Board of Directors of Asheville-Buncombe Technical Community College. Gene was recently appointed to the Buncombe County Planning Board, and he serves as Chairman of the Board, and whereas Gene's primary interest continues to be improving the quality of life for the residents of Asheville and Buncombe County, and securing a positive future for youth within our community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as follows. First, that August 6, 2019 be and hereby is proclaimed as Gene Bell Day in Buncombe County. Second, that all Buncombe County citizens are encouraged to recognize the many contributions of Gene Bell to our community. And third, that this proclamation be effective upon its adoption, adopted this sixth day of August, 2019, Board of Commissioners for Buncombe County, by Brownie Newman, Chairman. And this can't go without you saying a few words, you know. Oh, we got one more.
One more. One more. Unfortunately, Robin Ramsey, from Senator Burr's Western Office, was out of town and couldn't be here this evening, so she asked me, and it is my pleasure and honor, to deliver to you the flag that was flown over our United States Capitol in your honor.
Gene, I thought that was a flag or a really big bow.
Right, right. Well, at this point, I can handle both, so thank you. I just wanted to thank you all, and as proud as I am, but I'm also that humble, I want you to realize that some of the successes I've experienced that I've gotten credit for... I want to thank you again, and I'll talk to Robin, and this is really a big deal for me. So my last thing, and I'll ask Mike Woods to come up. We have the thank-you notes from the kids that went to Branson, Missouri, and we want to share those with you, and we have them broken out by the district that they live in, and so that you'll get a clear example of what we're doing and how much they appreciate your efforts. So I'm not going to be, tell you that I want to share the reward with you, because I don't. But I will tell you, without you, it wouldn't happen. So thank each of you for your contribution. All right, next on our agenda, we have four public hearings.
The first is a hearing on economic development for the Mountain Community Capital Fund, and Tim Love will present this item.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. No slides this evening, just a discussion on the Mountain Community Capital Fund. You should be familiar with this program. It's been before this board on two separate occasions. But as a refresher, the Mountain Community Capital Fund is a small business loan guarantee program. It's a partnership with the County of Buncombe, as well as the City of Asheville, and three CDFIs, Community Development Financial Institutions, which include Mountain Bizworks, SelfHelp, and Carolina Small Business. As we've done this year with other economic development appropriations, the statute does require that these appropriations are brought before you in the form of a public hearing, even though they've been approved by you through a budgetary process. So this evening, we are asking for a public hearing to allow the public to comment on the Mountain Community Capital Fund and the $200,000 associated with that small business loan guarantee program. However, we are not asking for any type of vote from this board. Additionally, we're not asking for any additional funding. This is funding that's already been appropriated and included in the FY '20 budget. And a couple of dates, just as refreshers, this first came before you at the October 17th, 2017, regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners when it was first approved, and then was brought back before you on October 6, 2018, at which point you approved the county to move forward with the actual agreement that created the Mountain Community Capital Fund. So if there are no questions at this time, I would turn it to y'all and ask that the public hearing be opened.
I've got a question. So when will the, when will the, do you know when the $200,000 will be awarded? And, you know, what's the process on that? Do you know, have any information on that?
That's correct. So at this point, it's sitting in our general fund. It hasn't moved, will not move until the completion of the public hearing, at which point we would transfer the funding to SelfHelp, who serves as the custodian of the fund, which means they hold the funding until it needs to be used. No funding would be sort of allocated without approval of the Mountain Community Capital Fund Operating Committee, which is a committee made up of staff from the county as well as the city, and includes representatives from the community that were appointed by this board as well.
Okay, thanks.
All right, I will open the public hearing on this matter at 5:37 PM. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment? Mr. Yelton, and y'all have three minutes for public comment.
Won't take three minutes. $200,000, I would, I'll be sending an email to our county manager with this request. I want to know what line item that $200,000 is coming from, and what else is in that line item for this type of investment in 2020. So that question will be sent to her, and I think that's something that should have been reported here in this public hearing. Because remember, we want to encourage people to go to the internet and monitor and watch the disbursement of money. Therefore, they will be more conscious of what the county commissioners are doing, and how much you do do for the community. We can also catch you if you're not watching, okay?
Anyone else? All right, seeing anyone else, I will close the public hearing at 5:38 PM. And Tim, where'd Tim go? Oh, right there in the front row, okay. Like, looking back here, right here. So, Tim, again, this is coming from the county's economic development budget. Any other details you would share in response to the question about, you know, kind of where the funds are being allocated from for this small business loan program?
That's right. Jennifer Barnett, can I put you on the spot?
Don't worry about it, you can answer these questions. I'll take it.
That's okay, it's a good, it's a fair question.
No, we'd like to know, so.
No, so actually, I don't want to contradict him, but if I remember correctly, and I can certainly get this information back to you, we actually took action, I do believe, during fiscal year 2019, to establish those funds from the general fund to, available in the multi-year fund, which I do believe was our, like, a special revenue fund. I can get that information for you, but it is an already established budget in that amount, to my recollection, and will supply you with that information.
Okay. Okay, all right. Any other questions? All right, no actions needed on this item. It's already been voted on. This is simply holding the required public hearing. So, Tim, thanks for your, and thanks, everyone, for your help with this.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have three rezoning items, and Joshua Freeman will be presenting each one of these. The first one is the, you heard, if I'm pronouncing that right, rezoning request.
Yes, sir, thank you. If we could have the PowerPoint pulled up. Right. Okay, so the first application before you is the Uherka rezoning application. This is case number ZPH 2019-22. Let me state for the record that this application was, or this public hearing was properly noticed in accordance with county code and state law. The screen before you shows the various dates involved in the public hearing notification process. The applicants are Robert and Laura Uherka. The address of the property is 119 Woodland Drive in Swannonoa. This project has, or this application has kind of been around for a while, and has been through several iterations of review. So, a little unusual, but I'll kind of give the history of this just briefly. On May 20th, the planning board first considered this rezoning in its original form. On June 18th, the applicant withdrew the rezoning application prior to a hearing before this board with the idea of revising their application to a smaller area. On June 19th, the applicant submitted a revised rezoning plan. On July 1st, the planning board was scheduled to meet, but they were not able to achieve a quorum that night, so it was continued to the next meeting, July 15th. The planning board then did review and forward a recommendation to this body. On August 8th, the Board of Commissioners, tonight, we're here to have the public hearing on this case. Some property information, and then there's a few edits here that have, I'm making based on some revised information. The total property, the original application was to rezon the entire property, 14.7 acre, 07 acres, from RLD Residential, which is residential low-density, to R1 Residential. The rezoning area was revised to 1.05 acres, based on that schedule that I previously summarized. I had originally said 1.7. The applicant submitted an actual survey document. My estimate was based on our mapping system internally. This is actually a field-based survey, so the acreage is actually smaller than I thought it was, hence the change. There's one existing single-family home on the property, and the property is serviceable by public water and public sewer. This graphic gives you a before and after. If you choose to approve this rezoning tonight, the screen, the map on the left shows the current zoning in RLD. The map on the right shows the small, yellow-hatched area to the east, far eastern corner of that property. That is what's being discussed for rezoning. The rest of the 14, the remaining 13 acres of the overall 14-acre tract is not part of this public hearing. Comparing the two zoning districts, RLD is primarily intended to provide locations for low-density residential and related developments, typically in environmentally sensitive areas, steep slopes and fragile soils. R1, on the other hand, is primarily intended to provide single-family and two-family residential uses in areas where water and sewer is generally present. Give you some numbers to compare the two districts. On the left-hand table, these are some of the standards that are in the ordinance, 43,000, one acre, 43,560 square feet, minimum lot size in RLD. Under R1, with water and sewer, you can actually go down to an 8,000-square-foot lot. Maximum units per acre in RLD is two, in R1 it's 10. The setbacks are fairly similar in situations where you have water and sewer. The rear yard setback changes by five feet, and the side yard setback changes by seven feet, is reduced under R1. The table on the right gives you kind of a real-world scenario for this property. Total acres, subject to rezoning, is 1.05, or just a little bit more than 46,000, 43, 46,000 square feet, sorry. The minimum lot size, again, is 43,000 square feet under RLD. Under R1, it's 8,000 square feet. Given those numbers on the rezoning area, if it were not to change zoning, you could get two dwelling units in that area with the proposed rezoning. For single-family residential development, we estimate you could get five realistically. On paper, you could do as many as 10 dwelling units. That's sort of in a vacuum of not factoring in driveways and right-of-way and setbacks and things like that. Practically speaking, on the ground with single-family structures, you could, you could get five. So now we're getting into some of the comprehensive plan analysis, or the land use plan analysis variables. The land use plan recommends that you not upzone to a higher density classification when the elevation is over 2,500 feet above sea level. The revised rezoning is not, so it does comply. It also recommends not upzoning when the slope is greater, 25, is greater than 25%. A portion of the reduced rezoning area still is within that 25% or greater slope area. Most of these slopes are surrounding the existing home. You can kind of see on this map, there's a white, kind of skinny rectangle. That's roughly where the existing home is sitting, and then you have a cut slope behind it and a, and a, and a, a fill slope below it. So the existing 25% or greater slopes are really kind of around the perimeter of that house. But it is within that 25% slope or greater area. I do want to point out that our regulations don't begin restricting development until you hit 35% slope. So our policy steers us away from slopes 25% or greater. Our regulations kick in at 35%. High-hazard slope areas, there is a small block of high-hazard slope on the property in the rezoning area. That is the, the cut slope below the house, kind of where the existing septic system is located. These images give you a sense of, you know, what's around the subject property from different perspectives. So here, you're looking north across the property. The yellow dot is roughly where the existing house is. Here, you're looking south across the property. Here, you're looking toward the east. And then here, you're looking toward the west. Land use plan analysis, it's kind of a mixed bag in this particular case. It is fairly distant from any transportation corridors. However, it is within reasonable proximity to water and sewer. It's adjacent to the site. As I mentioned earlier, it does have some 25% slip or greater on the property. It's not in the high-elevation area. It does contain a small area of moderate slope stability, and it's outside the flood hazard area. Staff's perspective on this, and I do want to point out, we do deviate from the planning board's recommendation, and I'll come to that in a moment. Staff's recommend, perspective is that the steep slope areas that remain on the property, again, fall below a regulatory threshold, and they're kind of de minimis areas, they're very small, they're really a result of, to some extent, the grading that happened to support the existing home. And so they're, they're small and incidental, but that is a matter of perspective. The planning board's recommendation was originally by a vote of seven to one denial, based on the original application. At the public hearing where the applicant withdrew their application, and the item was sent back to the planning board, or they withdrew their application and then resubmitted for reconsideration before the planning board, the vote then changed from a three to three, so it's a tie vote, which, under state law and under our ordinance, has the effect of being a negative recommendation. So the planning board recommends denial. Their basis for recommendation is really that, that 25% slope area. So they evaluated your policy, and your policy, kind of on its face, when you, when you look at it, it does steer you in that direction. Staff's recommendation does deviate respectfully from the planning board, and it's really more about kind of the site circumstances on the ground. The application, the applicant does have a presentation, but before I turn it over to the applicant, available to take any questions.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You just said it was a three-three vote. The memo that was attached to the meeting agenda tonight says it was a five-o vote.
Can we get back to the presentation? I did something wrong. Yeah, I, that was a mistake I made in the initial submittal to this board, so I've corrected it since then, but the vote was actually three to three.
It was three-three.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That helps.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Yes, ma'am.
Lamar, you want to say that into the mic, so people can hear that, please?
Yeah, I just received that this afternoon, the updated presentation, and I did update it with what's online. You may have to refresh your, your website, but it has been updated to the new version.
And that was my error, that I didn't get it until today, so.
One other question. You said, so there's one house already on the property, and realistically, the difference between these two zoning options, realistically, what does it mean in terms of the number of homes you could build under existing versus the rezoned status?
Absolutely. So assuming we're talking about a single-family residential comparison, given the acreage and the need for driveways and driveway cuts and things like that, under the current zoning in that same footprint, you could do two dwelling units.
Two total or two more?
Two total.
So one, one more home?
So one more home, two total.
Okay.
So the existing 25% or greater slopes are really kind of around the perimeter of that house. But it is within that 25% slope or greater area. I do want to point out that our regulations don't begin restricting development until you hit 35% slope. So our policy steers us away from slopes 25% or greater, our regulations kick in at 35%. High-hazard slope areas, there is a small block of high-hazard slope on the property in the rezoning area. That is the, the cut slope below the house, kind of where the existing septic system is located. These images give you a sense of, you know, what's around the subject property from different perspectives. So here you're looking north across the property. The yellow dot is roughly where the existing house is. Here you're looking south across the property. Here you're looking toward the east. And then here you're looking toward the west. Land use plan analysis, it's kind of a mixed bag in this particular case. It is fairly distant from any transportation corridors. However, it is within reasonable proximity to water and sewer, it's adjacent to the site. As I mentioned earlier, it does have some 25% slip or greater on the property. It's not in the high-elevation area. It does contain a small area of moderate slope stability, and it's outside the flood hazard area. Staff's perspective on this, and I do want to point out, we do deviate from the planning board's recommendation, and I'll come to that in a moment. Staff's recommend, perspective is that the steep slope areas that remain on the property, again, fall below a regulatory threshold, and they're kind of de minimis areas, they're very small, they're really a result of, to some extent, the, the grading that happened to support the existing home. And so they're, they're small and incidental, but that is a matter of perspective. The planning board's recommendation was originally by a vote of seven to one denial, based on the original application. At the public hearing where the applicant withdrew their application, and the item was sent back to the planning board, or they withdrew their application and then resubmitted for reconsideration before the planning board. The vote then changed from a three to three, so it's a tie vote, which under state law and under our ordinance, has the effect of being a negative recommendation. So the planning board recommends denial. Their basis for recommendation is really that, that 25% slope area. So they, they evaluated your policy, and your policy kind of on its face, when you, when you look at it, it does steer you in that direction. Staff's recommendation does deviate respectfully from the planning board, and it's really more about kind of the site circumstances on the ground. The application, the applicant does have a presentation, but before I turn it over to the applicant, available to take any questions.
I do have a question.
Yes ma'am.
You just said that was a three-three vote. The memo that was attached to the meeting agenda tonight says it was a five-o vote.
Can we get back to the presentation? I did something wrong. Yeah, I, that was a mistake I made in the initial submission to this board, so I've corrected it since then, but the vote was actually three to three.
It was three-three?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
That helps.
Thank you, Josh.
Yes ma'am.
Lamar, you want to say that into the mic so people can hear that, please?
Yeah, I just received that this afternoon, the updated presentation, and I did update it with what's online. You may have to refresh your, your website, but it has been updated to the new version.
And that was my error, I didn't catch it until today, so.
One other question, you said, so there's one house already on the property. And realistically, the difference between these two zoning options, realistically, what does it mean in terms of the number of homes you could build under existing versus the rezoned status?
Absolutely. So assuming we're talking about a single-family residential comparison, given the acreage and the need for driveways and driveway cuts and things like that, under the current zoning in that same footprint, you could do two dwelling units.
Two total or two more?
Two total.
So one, one more home?
So one more home, two total. Under, under the rezoning on that same footprint, you could do a maximum of five homes, including the existing homes.
So maybe build four more?
So, that's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And let me clarify that, actually, in order to do that, you would actually have to tear the existing home down and reconfigure the lots there. Where the current house is sitting, there's no way you could get more than two additional units there, because it, it sits kind of in the middle of that rezoning area.
So theoretically, you could do more, but from a practical standpoint, it probably is a difference between one new home or two new homes.
That's correct. That's staff's understanding or belief, yes sir.
Other questions? All right, well, why don't we open the public, oh, let's let the property owners up, give their presentation, then we'll open the public hearing. All right.
If we could pull the presentation back up.
So, forward, backward, don't hit the red button. Good evening, Chairman, Board of Commissioners, my name is Michael Goforth. I work here in the town, I'm a civil engineer, my company's High Country Engineering. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight and to listen to our rezoning request for the Uherkas. On the slide there, I want you to see the first thing that comes up. This is the plat that they have prepared. They've already submitted this to the county planning department, which is contingent upon this approval. And this is their intention of what they desire to do. If you look, there's an entire, on the left-hand side of the screen here, there's, you know, the, the remainder of the property that has quite a bit of steep slope, that's higher in elevation and so forth. That is not part of this rezoning, this is the plat that we're looking at. So they're showing three lots here with a proposed 45-foot right-of-way, only to allow for access for that piece, that remainder of the parcel on the backside there. So like Josh said, there's, the minimum lot size is 8,000 square feet for this zoning with water and sewer. The water and sewer is right there in front of the piece of property. There will require no sewer line extensions or water line extensions to serve these two additional units here, or lots. They, they really couldn't do much more and keep the existing house. I, I immediately have regretted not taking a picture of the existing house and providing it in this thing, because the Uherkas have spent quite a bit of time and effort and their own money fixing that house up. I think if anybody were to drive by it today and take a look at it, you'd realize it's not a house that's meant for demolition. And so that is a regret, that I did not include that, but here we are. I do have a couple additional slides, just to continue to show you some of the other homes surrounding, within a quarter-mile of this piece of property, and so you can kind of get an idea for what they are. I also want to point out, the two additional lots on the front that are fronting their Woodlawn Drive, they're at .22 acres, so keep that in mind, which is above the 8,000-square-foot threshold. That, that .22 is 97.40 roughly square feet. So this house, you can see on the left side is from your GIS, this is their next-door neighbor here. You can see the typical house size there, what it looks like. They're on .31 acres right there, this is directly next door to them on that piece of property. This is just a couple houses down from there. Another moderately-sized family house, .31 acres, that's the lot size there. Another house directly down, you can see there's highlighted on the left where that parcel is in relation to the subject prop, subject property that we've done there. Another reasonably-sized, single-family home on .1 acres, very similar zoning. There's another house that's right down the road, it's on .29 acres, it's right there, close to it. And lastly, this is the house that's right there, as you drive in, it's close to them. It's on .27 acres, very tight footprint, very small house. The Uherkas have indicated to me that this is their intention to continue to build something in this manner, that looks something like this, that has a small footprint on these two additional lots that they are requesting to have here. I want to leave this, just so you can remember that this is what they're asking for. They're not asking for any of the back portion of the property to be rezoned, to be changed, to do anything with that at this meeting. They're mainly focusing on redoing, creating these two additional lots on this piece of property. I would like to request that after the public hearing portion, that we would be able to come back up and just clear up any things that have come out of that process, if that was, if that's possible, Commissioner.
Do you mind if I ask a question while I jump here? So, but we are, this is a straight rezoning, they're right, so we're not approving a site plan, we are approving the straight rezoning. And I appreciate the schematic, but, you know, some of the concerns I think we've heard have been that there might be a lot more built on the property if it's rezoned. So I don't, I mean, have other plans been shown that show more construction, or is?
Not to my knowledge, I haven't prepared any. I have, I did see the Uherkas did, they did prepare a, another plat that they provided to me that showed an additional three houses. Now those were, those were exactly 8,000-square-foot lots. So they were very tight footprint, but I think that does not reflect what this rezoning is asking you for. That is only reflecting this 1.05 acres, which is what we're asking for right now. That was one, I think it had some additional on the, on the top end of the, to make the last lot 8,000 square feet. So that's the only plan that I've seen, I haven't prepared anything that would represent more than that. Nor with, more, nor the, nor more than what I provided here as part of this presentation.
All right, well, why don't we go ahead and open the public hearing? And so we'll do that now, I'm going to open the public hearing at 5:59 PM. Any members of the public who wish to comment are welcome to do so. You'll have up to three minutes, you'll get, when you have 30 seconds left, the lights will change. And when your time's up, please conclude your comments at that time, we want to be fair and give everyone the same amount of time. And just please share your name and where you live. You can give those to our clerk, yes ma'am? That's fine.
I'm just waiting for everybody to get a copy of that.
Okay, go ahead, it's fine.
So, my name is Pam Teggy, I live to the north of this property, so I kind of have to drive through the issues that I'm raising. In the packet that I've given you, you'll see a number of pictures. The Uherkas have only graded the driveway. And this is the mess we have out in the road currently. They have attempted to put up silt fencing, but to no avail, because the steep on, the slope on that lot, water is running downhill out into the road. We have walkers, bicyclers, vehicles. Sunday, we had horseback riders. It is a grave concern to us that this is what we're looking at, at this time. If you look at the next, this is the drawing that the gentleman referred to. And the, the issue for us is that that drawing had three lots plus the house lot. This is like a ship shape, you know, a shape, whatever you call it, shapeshifter, everything moves. Every time someone brings up an issue, they change, you know, it was going to be two to three small houses. Now the lots have been changed, we've got two houses. And the fact is that if you agree to rezone this, there is absolutely nothing to stop them from putting those seven units. And if the lots are too small, and they can't do it at one level, they can do it up. The pictures that the gentleman showed you, all those houses are on flat land. None of them are in a steep slope area. The last house he showed you, the little tiny house, actually is a slope, and it goes down behind the house, not in front of the house, that would, it would run out onto the road. When we went to, I'm running out of time, we went to the zoning meeting. The three people who voted against, Rittenberg, Martin, and Waldrop, were very concerned about the pictures and what we were looking at. And Ms. Waldrop wanted to make sure that her concern about the steep slope runoff was noted in those. I mean, she specifically asked for it to be noted. And I have one more, I'm going to run out of time. When Josh did his analysis, he gave you seven points why to approve it. He gave you two points not to approve it, or not to approve it, but when he did, he also mentioned that there were a lot of...
Your time is up. All right, thank you there. And thank you for these, the information you shared. All right.
Hello, my name is Michael Hayes. I'm here in basically three different sort of capacities. I'm here, I, I actually am the trustee and the beneficiary of the trust that abuts their total parcel, the 14-acre parcel, or 40 acres above it. I'm a resident of 58 Hopeview Road, which is also above this property. And I'm also here representing the Woodlands Homeowners Association, which I'm the president of. That's a 12-unit subdivision that's at the top of Woodland Drive. Our homeowners don't support this petition, just a couple things I'd say. I have seen another plat that was referred to. This, this thing's changed two or three times during the course of it. So I came prepared with, with comments about that, and I see this new one today that's, that's different, that's only two, two additional houses, but it's got the same problem. If you, I've done, I've done, I'm a real estate developer, and I've done three small subdivisions in Buncombe County and two large subdivisions. So I'm pretty familiar with the requirements, but the issues here, I, I don't see, even in this new plan, I don't see any ingress or regress to these lots. The only thing that you can, only way in, I looked at this property, I brought an engineer in, he concluded that the current zoning is, is appropriate for the house. There's no, I, I don't see any way to get driveways to these two new lots, because the land across the front of that is owned by the state, that, that right-of-way in the front, so they can't cross that. So the only way in is through the lot. I didn't see any ingress or regress or easements into these two new lots, so I don't know how they get there. The big problem, of course, is, is the stormwater. This is, I think, 1.05 acres, which would require a stormwater plan. I know Doug Sharp's been out there at least once, required him to put up a silt fence. We've had mud in the road since they started fooling with the, the existing house that they were working on. It's still there, they put the silt fences up, we've still got the mud. That spot is on a kind of a blind corner coming down, Woodland is a very narrow road, so it's on kind of a blind corner. So I've got some concerns about the traffic coming around there, and what they would do, and how they're going to get out onto the road with, through that existing driveway. But to summarize, basically, I, this, this has changed hands several times, it's been here three times. It's been like, well, if you don't like this plan, here's another one, let's try this one. When I come to you guys, I usually come with a site plan and tell you what I'm going to do. So, but we've got stormwater problems there, we've got a lot of runoff. We've got a, a, a lot of traffic on there, and that's a blind corner coming around. You know, obviously, they could change their plan after it's, when it's rezoned, it's rezoned. I mean, they could sell it, and the future owner could do whatever they want with it. So we just, as, again, in my capacity as the, the president of the association, we cannot support this, this petition. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else? Let the, you can come next, your turn, you go first, thanks. And then you, you're next.
Hi, good evening, my name is Sophia Papadopoulos, and I am a resident of Grove Mount on Swananoa. Some of you may or may not know me, from several years ago, we had some, some concerns right on this very same road. And actually, the previous owners of this property are one of the reasons why I got started. I had spoken to Leah and Walter, or actually just Lee, excuse me, because they were going to put in the Veterans Home entrance right across the street from our home. So we had major issues just on traffic issues on that road. And we fought the state, and we won, and we removed the entrance, and we put it around on Lake Eden Road. The property was already mentioned this evening, how absolutely beautiful it is. And the Uherkas have done a tremendous job remodeling the home and making it ready to sell. It is being sold for way over the value of most homes in our area, so I, I do wish them luck in selling it. I'm not really sure what's going to happen. They put two houses in front of that, the third house, the current house up there, there's not going to be any visibility of it whatsoever. So I also, to what Mike said, how are they, how we're even going to get driveways into these new lots is beyond me. The current house there is for sale for one, I think with one acre, but I'm not really sure, because the plans keep changing, how, how are, how are you actually going to get to these homes? I, I don't know. We do have a major issue with stormwater. I live on the part of that slope as well, and we have, we have tremendous runoff issues. And so the, just the flooding and the water and the runoff is, is a major concern. My biggest concern is that, kind of what Pam said, is that there, we're in shapeshifter mode. Like every time we hear about it, something is changing. I'm highly concerned that 10 units are going to pop in on 1.05 acres. That does not fit into the landscape of our neighborhood whatsoever. We have very nice lots, we are very grateful that we have nice lots. It's a very family-oriented neighborhood, there are people in the streets walking, there are people on their bikes. Where, where 10 units, seven units, five units is going to go, I, I have no idea. I don't want to see it there, I think it would completely change the landscape of what we have. And it also would open the doors to somebody else doing kind of the same thing, which isn't very fitting. Two houses, I think, I will say this, somebody is going to buy the prop, I mean, somebody was going to buy the property, somebody was going to try to develop it. And what I'm asking is that there's a lot of respect and consideration to the neighborhood moving forward.
All right, thank you very much. All right, yes sir, your turn.
My name is Robert Randolph, I live at 105 Woodland Drive. It was the second house featured on the slideshow earlier just below the property in question. My wife, Jeanne, I've lived there for 22 years. I have three points to make regarding to this rezoning request. The first is the issue of affordable housing. I grew up in the West Asheville of the 50s and the 60s, the main reason being, when my parents moved to West Asheville in 1945, straight from Oak Ridge, Tennessee, where my dad had been involved in the war efforts. They were a young couple with two preschool children and needed an affordable place to live. They bought that house on Fairfax Avenue for $3,000, which of course was worth a lot more in 1945 than it is now. But I grew up in a community where affordable housing was in reach of most people. It was not a government program, it was just West Asheville, and that's the way it was. And I have a real heartfelt commitment to providing affordable housing for people here in Buncombe County. I've spoken to that in other forums. The Uherkas are proposing a place where three small houses that would be affordable for many young families would be provided and available. So I speak first of all as proponent of affordable housing. Secondly, with all due respect to some of my neighbors, I think their proposal would fit in well with our neighborhood. Immediately behind my house, there are three single-wide manufactured homes, what we used to call trailers, that fit in nicely into the neighborhood. And the house that was featured at 220 Eastwood Drive is inside of my front porch. It is a very small house, a very small footprint, two rooms on three levels, that fits incredibly well into a very small lot. The young family that lives there were able to buy it because it is a small house, and it was very affordable. And it fits into our neighborhood beautifully, it's an asset, looking at it from my front porch, and as you can see, we're blessed to live in a pretty nice house. So I speak that it does, in my opinion, fit into the neighborhood. And thirdly, I want to speak on behalf of the Uherkas. I'd never... I'd never met them until a previous meeting here, when the original request for rezoning came up, and I met with Mrs. Uherka Laura after the meeting out in the hallway, and we had to be shushed down because my preacher voice gets a little loud sometimes, and we were reminded that we needed to keep it down, that you all were still meeting. But Mrs. Uherka was very open to discussing-
Your time is, your time is up.
Thank you.
Yep, no, thank you very much, sorry. Have to cut people off, but we do wanna keep it, keep it equal for everyone. All right, yes, sir.
My name is Brian Mumpower. I grew up in Grovemont. I've known everything about Grovemont since I was a little boy. Most of the people that lived there worked in mills. Clarence Ogil, he raced a race car. The people that own Briscoe, Ken Lannan, lived right down the road from me. Frank and Doris Wright live right up the road from me. You know, all these people that lived in Grovemont, they worked hard for their money. These houses weren't just for rich people, even though it is Grovemont. I grew up in Grovemont and went in the military after I graduated high school, went to Owen. I work at Grovestone, I'm a heavy equipment operator at the rock quarry. I drive part-time for Ingalls, and I used to drive for Roy Edwards Trucking Company. And I know all about what it takes to step into a situation and do a job, especially with erosion, especially with trees, especially with explosives. And, you know, I've seen these houses being built in Grovemont in the last little bit, and they're building them in places that's just weird. I mean, you're building them in a swamp, you're building them right next to a creek, you're building them, my dad and my mom just had a house, they were trying to build next to them in Grovemont, on the water line, and they had to call the county and everybody about it. And the house that they're showing next to them, I, I watched that house, I know the guy that built it, he comes into the quarry and gets his stone. But they're not telling that that house sits in a slope that is really just a hole where it stays wet all the time. I mean, they're just, these houses are being built in places that people that grew up around here or that lived here all their life, they wouldn't build houses in those places. And they're coming in here and they're buying these houses, and they're taking them and they're basically cutting them up, selling off the properties, and walking away with a pile of cash, and the people that lived here all their life, that were part of the community, they can't even go out and buy another house for the same money because it's hyperinflated to market. You know, I, I've sat and had conversations with my dad about it, and they get pretty colorful sometimes, but I don't, I don't see a win in this deal. I even mowed the grass down the road by this property, and Sunday, I was mowing, I mow it about four times a year, and Sunday I was mowing, this lady comes by me in a car and I'm going up by Dwight Hussey's house, and all of a sudden, she doesn't get over or nothing, and I could've reached out and touched her on her riding lawnmower. I liked to myself.
All right. Yeah, she's next.
My name's Robert Uherka, and this is my wife Laura. And we wanna do a closing statement about what was discussed today. In a relationship to the property, I've been in dialogue with North Carolina DOT to address the, the drainage there. We're fine with that, I've been in dialogue with Doug Sharp about the drainage, we've abided by everything he's directed us to do. We're, we're trying to be as forthcoming as possible with this whole project. The reason we've transferred it down to just two lots in the front was to be as consistent as possible with what remain, what the rest of the neighborhood is. So we made that choice to down, bring it down from three lots to two, in order to just make sure that the neighbors felt like it was fitting into the neighborhood that is consistent with point two two acres. So we're trying our best to really make it fit the, the way that they're speaking of, keep the integrity of the neighborhood. And then my wife has final statements.
That's great, thank you Chairman, thank you Board. Our rezoning request includes the one house which already exists, and if you noticed on the survey, it sits in the middle of the upper portion, and we'll be keeping that land with that house, so we're not planning to build five, we wanna build, like you said earlier, the two more on the bottom, that's it. They're adjacent to the R1 zoning, so it just continues what's already on that street all the way coming up to that property line. The lots are right on a paved state road with access to city water and sewer through MSD. There was some confusion that we wanted to rezone the upper part of the property, which we do not, we didn't ever. To be clear, this is only for that lower piece of the property on the corner right on the road. And we have made every effort we can to work with the community and to hear their concerns, that's why the changes have happened, is to really try to accommodate and honor what people have been asking for. And so, again, just to reiterate, this is just right in line with what's on the street, and we have the city water and the MSD available. And thank you for your time, and thanks in advance for your approval of our request.
All right, thank you. Mr. Yeldon?
Thank you for letting me come up after the wind-up comment. I, I don't have a dog in this fight, I don't live in Grovemont, I know Grovemont, but I do have a dog in this fight, because I have a master's degree in environmental systems engineering. And this is deja vu, Brownie. We need to stop runoff. How do you stop runoff? You give people the tax incentive to bury a septic tank in their front yard and collect the runoff from the roof, and you put a pump on there to use that rainwater to flush your commode. The craziest thing in the world is treating drinking water to drinking water standard and using it to flush your crap down. That is stupid, idiotic. So give the people an incentive to do that. Another thing, if you're gonna build on a slope, some of these little houses I've seen in Asheville don't have a footprint, and all you have to do is leave the ground alone. You put up stilts. Everything suggested, and that's true, affordable housing, that's the reason people are building wherever they can. But what kinda people do you have on your planning board to let this come over here in a condition where they could change something? Why didn't you specify these things when you planted board? Or do you have people on the planning board that don't understand stormwater management? Don't understand, you go to DOT to get a permit to put a road in. I put them in. And if the DOT's there, you get a permit and put it in. So I question, y'all don't have enough information tonight to make a decision on this. You probably will, but I think you need to put it off. And I'll give you a list of questions. I'll meet with you personally, I'll go to the site with you, and we'll give you a list of questions you need to put in the specs that go with the deed. So if they sell it, guess what? The person that gets it, you've already put your homework in, and you've already put it in writing. That's why I said, I don't have a dog in this fight, but I got a dog in the fight for Buncombe County. I met David Gant when he was first sworn in, and I said, David, look at the mountains, we're gonna be like California, houses washing off the mountains. We're getting close to it, aren't we?
Anyone else? All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing at six nineteen PM. Commission members, any questions or is there a motion? I would just, I would just wanna, you know, I would just wanna remind everyone that we are voting on a straight rezoning, so there's been discussion about specific plans. We are not reviewing a site plan here tonight, we're not reviewing a subdivision plan. There's been discussion about it, and different ideas from different folks shared about that, but the question before the commission is whether to rezone this property in a straight rezoning fashion or, or to, or to not do that, and that's the only question before us today. All right.
Just a question, and maybe we can get guidance on whether this is relevant to what we're voting on. Can we get clarification on what is for sale? The, the lot that has the already built houses for sale, as I understand, does that lot include the two parcels under, is that a?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good question. What's for sale is the house we just finished renovating and the lot that it's on only, these two lower ones are not part of that.
These two lower ones sit, okay, thank you.
The two lower ones front the main road.
Correct.
Are not for sale at this time. All right, thank you.
But- The entire parcel is being rezoned-
Entire parcel's being rezoned.
Including where the house is.
Includes the house, that's right.
Which means if the house went away, anything that is under R1 could be put there.
Could be rezoned.
Okay, we need to just listen to the-
In addition to what Ms. Hockaday said, just to be clear, the reason, the entire property is fourteen acres. That is the parcel right now. I can't speak to what's on the market, but what I can tell you is that the, the, the application that we, the, the, the site plan that you've seen on the screen tonight, that is also an application that we've received for an actual minor subdivision to create those three lots, which includes the existing house. Depending on the outcome of this hearing tonight, if the board chooses to approve this, the applicant could then proceed with the final steps in getting approval for that minor subdivision, which would allow all three of those lots, or none of them, to be sold. So I just wanna be clear that right now, there's only one parcel, and it's fourteen acres.
So, so let me summarize, so right now, it's just one single parcel, fourteen acres?
Yes.
Sounds like the property owners are marketing the house, just as the house, but with the intention, if this is, rezoning is approved, to subdivide it as, as submitted to the county and as shown in the place.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
But we're only voting on one acre.
But we're only voting on the rezoning, so, so they could withdraw that.
But not rezoning the whole fourteen acres.
That's correct. So the rezoning area is one point zero five acres-
Yes.
Of a total of fourteen acres, one point five, one point zero five acres in the rezoning.
All right, thank you.
And that aligns with what you've seen, but-
So, so the only question, well, probably just one question, but, you know, as far as the, as far as the mudding road and the, you know, silt fences, and I mean, Buncombe County's got pretty stiff, I mean, there's probably some people in the room that can raise their hand, including me, that's, that's, they've said, fix your silt fence, or, you know, have your church fix their silt fence, or put more up, can somebody speak to that? I mean, you know, surely we, we have in place things that would, would help prevent that.
Sure. So Doug Sharp is our erosion control officer, he would look at anything related to mud in the road. Mike Goodson is a public engineer who's on our staff as well, he's our stormwater engineer. And the two are independent of each other, but related. So an erosion permit is separate from a stormwater permit. A stormwater permit itself usually comes into play when you disturb one acre or more. Typically, what that means is when you have, say, an apartment project, or multiple lots that are being developed by the same developer or builder. There is the potential here, based on what the Uherkas choose to do, that they might sell these lots independently, say, to a different person, and they may build their own independent home, and not necessarily trigger a full-blown stormwater permit. But the trigger for a stormwater permit is one acre. The trigger for an erosion control permit is one acre. And that's related to the overall disturbance. Now, what that means, though, is if we find that soil's washing out into a road, we will drive by and we will have a conversation, and usually that results in someone cleaning up the mess and taking action like putting up a silt fence.
All right. Other questions, or is there a motion? All right, go ahead.
You gonna speak? Okay, all right. Well, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to approve on the, the reason is, you know, when I look at the, the adjoining properties, it appears to me that, you know, four to five would be the maximum amount of houses to be able to put in that area, and we do have, you know, split opinions tonight, as we do, on a lot of the zoning issues, but I would, I would move approval.
Okay. Ms. Hockaday?
First, we need to address the issue of plan consistency statements. Whether that this proposal is consistent with the current land use plan, and I think your packet, Commissioner Belzner should've had a consistency statement in it, and that's the first thing that, that needs to be addressed prior to actually adopting. Stating that the proposed amendment would not be detrimental to the owner's adjacent neighbors and surrounding community as it does meet a number of goals as identified in the Buncombe County Comprehensive Land Use Plan Update.
Okay, so where is that in my packet?
It's on page six, I believe, Heather, correct me if I'm wrong, it's on page six-
Of-
Josh may need to speak to it.
Staff analysis?
Page six.
For application.
Page six of the staff analysis document, the seventeen-page document, I believe.
It's on page six and seven of that.
All right, somebody help me out, where it's at. This is complicated, but it really doesn't need to be super- No, you just tell me where it's at, I got, I got it right here, just, oh, there it is.
Well, there's sep, the consistency statements are separate-
I understand.
From the staff analysis, which also includes a consistency statement, so they should have-
You have both.
You just need to say it's consistent with the land, land use plan, it does not adversely affect adjoining property owners.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that's consistent with the land use plan, and does not have an adverse effect. Hang on a minute, where is it in here?
It's highlighted, highlighted part.
The highlighted part.
Highlighted. Would not be detrimental to owner's adjacent neighbors and surrounding community as it does not, as it does meet a number of goals as identified in Buncombe County Comprehensive Land Use Plan Update. Therefore, the request is only would be reasonable in the public interest. Okay, so that's the motion.
Good job.
Thanks.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second to the motion?
Chairman, can this be put off? Because I'm not sure, I'm here in three houses, two houses, seven houses, ten houses.
So, so first, we have to determine if there's a second to the motion, let's do that, and then we can talk about that question. Is there a second to the motion? I'll second the motion. Now, to respond to the question, again, there's been different information shared about possible, you know, subdivisions of the larger, of the parcel and the smaller parcels, but to be clear, the rezoning of the property is just a straight rezoning. So there is no site plan that's for review by the county commission or before the planning board at this time. So any plans that have been shown, whether you love them or you don't love them, they could all be withdrawn, the property owners would have the full rights to develop the property if it's rezoned, as long as it's consistent with their rights under that rezoning. So there will be no guarantee that can be made to the county commission about what exactly will happen to the property if it's rezoned. And again, I think no one's alleging that anybody's misrepresenting any intentions, but they will have the full legal rights to use their property consistent with the rezoning, so I don't think we can get any guarantee whether it will be one additional home, two additional homes, or a different number, so, because it's a straight rezoning request.
I guess my question is, Josh, can they put seven homes on that? Tiny homes, duplex?
Yes, sir, sorry. So if you take the one point zero five acres that's proposed for the rezoning, convert that to square footage, and then divide it by eight thousand square feet, which is the minimum lot size for a single-family residential home, the math works out to five point two houses, so we round down, so five houses. Under a single-family development format, that is absolutely all you can do on this property, and that is not speculation, that's the laws written today. I'm sorry, five, what did I say? Sorry, five is all you can do under the law for a single-family residential. The challenge that you have, and it's a legitimate challenge, is that the theoretical could be something more if they were to go to a multifamily-type structure.
Sure.
And so that, that number jumps up. It, it, it works out to a maximum of ten dwelling units per acre, in theory, on one acre. So, so you have that, that ten potential, which is, which is, that potential is obviously modified by the reality of the ground, but there's wa, no way for us to know what that really is until you do a real site plan. So I'm, my analysis looks at it as a straight, one-to-one comparison of RLD to R1, single-family residential. Under that format, that's all you can get, five.
One other way we might think about- One other way we might think about it tonight is doing just the straight math. It's five lots. Five lots in Kansas may be where it's completely flat. Given our realities, let's look at it in terms of the configurations. Perhaps you might need a shared driveway, something like that. Now, the one thing to keep in mind, though, is you might have five lots, and you might build a single-family home, but you might have a garage apartment. You might have another unit, because remember, in all of our districts, except Beaver Dam, you can do two homes. Now, on a smaller lot, what does that translate to? Maybe a smaller secondary unit. But the reality is, five lots could potentially be ten homes. I think what Josh is driving at is in R1, there is the potential for a planned unit development, and that might be something small, like a cottage development, but at the same time, this is not a development application, and we simply don't know. This is a rezoning, just as you put it, and that's what we're considering tonight on 1.05 acres.
And, and, and under our county's land use policy, they would not be allowed, you know, they would not be allowed to present that kind of plan because the property's currently not zoned for it. So it's not, I don't think that it's that the property owners are, wouldn't want to show that if they did want to do it. They actually, under our process, where we don't have conditional zoning, they, they could not do that, right? So this is, this is, they're, they're going through the process that, you know, our, our system allows.
And the, just to mention, as their engineer stated, if they did a planned unit development, that's an application that had to be considered by the Board of Adjustment. And that's your body that would consider that development application. And a public hearing.
Okay. So I'll just, I'll just make a few comments on this. I think this is, you know, some, some projects come in front of us, and you know kind of right from the start, like, this is, I'm all for this, or you see it and you say, this is not a great idea, I'm definitely gonna vote against it. I feel like this is one of these judgment calls, honestly. You know, it's not in an area that's defined as steep slopes under our ordinance. It's less than that, it's less, it's less steep than that. There is water and sewer right on site, which, you know, our land use plan points towards the R1 being appropriate for that. I certainly would not have supported rezoning the whole property. But, you know, it's, it's, there's certainly some topography there. I mean, I'm, I think we're all concerned about, you know, making sure there's not, building on slopes is not, is not easy to do it right. So I think those are all legitimate concerns. But I'm, I'm just coming down on the fact that I, my belief is that the outcome will be a small development that probably looks a lot like the existing neighborhood, and that's, that's my sense, and so that's why I'm supportive of the motion. If there's no other comments, we're gonna vote on the motion.
On the consistency statement.
On the consistency statement.
Yep.
Alright. All in favor of approving the motion that the project is consistent with the county's land use plan? Signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, I heard four to three, or was it, Al, how did you vote?
Well, we're voting for the consistency.
The consistency statement, and then we'll vote on the rezoning, yes.
And then you vote.
For the consistency.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thanks, Jerry.
Alright, and Mr. Presley and Mr. Fryer, you were negative on the vote?
Yeah, but on consistency, I'm yeah.
Okay, you're for the consistency statement, and Mr. Fryer, you're, okay, so it's unanimously in favor.
Yeah.
Want to be clear, so it's seven to zero in favor of the consistency statement.
Consistency, sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, now we come to the question of the actual rezoning to R1. Is there a motion to approve the rezoning to R1?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. That motion fails four to three. Alright. Thank you. The noes were Edwards.
Whitesides.
Friar and Presley. Okay, alright.
That was interesting.
Okay, thank you, thank you everyone who came out to talk to us about this matter. Alright, the next item up is the McDonald rezoning request.
Okay. If you could pull up the McDonald's presentation, please? Thank you. So the next application is zoning public hearing 2019-29, McDonald zoning map amendment. This application, this public hearing was advertised in accordance with state law and county code. The date's before you represent the public hearing notification process that staff went through. The applicant is Lois McDonald and her family. The number of applicants are too numerous to mention, so I'm just gonna go with Lois tonight. The address is 569 and 571 Long Shoals Road in Arden. Subject property is 6.39 acres in size, currently has one single-family residential home on the property, and it is serviceable by public water and sewer. The current zoning is R2 Residential, which is our medium-density residential zoning district. The proposed rezoning would take the property, and I apologize, I have the wrong label here. It would, the proposed rezoning is for neighborhood service, not EMP, neighborhood service, which is, on the right-hand side, shows the brown, that would be the boundary of the existing neighborhood service after the, after approval if it's granted. The differences between these two districts, R2 is very similar to R1 and even RLD in terms of the range of allowable uses, primarily single-family, although it does allow for a range of single fam, I mean, multifamily-type uses and a very limited range of institutional-type uses, such as churches, home occupations, things like that. Neighborhood service is our lowest intensity commercial district, if you will. It's a transitional district between residential and commercial. Primarily a single, a multifamily residential-type district, but it also does allow, allow a range of institutional uses and some light commercials, so it allows retail, it also allows restaurants. The majority of, of uses that would be different from the current zoning would be things like banks, veterinary clinics, medical offices, things like that. In terms of neighborhood consistency, I keep making this mistake of EMP, I apologize. Anyway, let, let me just jump straight to the table. The table basically illustrates the, the lot size differentials, setback differentials, and, and really, they're almost identical in terms of the minimum lot sizes under water and sewer, well and septic. Setbacks are exactly identical, maximum building heights are exactly identical. So the change that you're looking at is really one of the allowable land uses. Some views of the property from different perspectives. This is looking north across the property. And you can see that, and this is a 2000, I believe this is a 2017 photograph, and it shows that the, the property is primarily undeveloped, with the exception of that existing home. To the, to the east, you have, and north, you have some institutional and commercial-type uses. To the west and south, it's primarily residential. Same view, different perspective, so you're looking west in this image. You're looking east in this image. Land use analysis, this actually fits every single one of your land use plan considerations, except that it is not separated from low-density residential. Staff would, would posit that this is the right kind of district if you're transitioning from low-density residential to some sort of light, light commercial-type use, but it does in fact not meet that one criteria. Recommendations, the planning board recommends approval is submitted by unanimous vote, and that's consistent with staff's recommendation, which is approval is submitted. I'd be happy to take questions.
Alright, let's open the public hearing at 6:41. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment? I'm gonna close the public hearing at 6:42. Commissioners, are there any questions, or is there a motion to approve the consistency statement first, or disapprove?
Please, who's got it? Joe, you have the consistency statement motion.
I have it, but I ain't gonna use it.
Precious, this is precious language, Chair.
Well, there it is, it's highlighted. The proposed map amendment would not be detrimental to the owner's, adjacent neighbors, and surrounding community as it does meet a number of goals as identified in the Buncombe County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Therefore, the requested zoning would be reasonable and in the public interest.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. Is there a motion to support the rezoning?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright. And the Higgins rezoning request.
Yes, sir. If you can pull up that presentation, please? Can we pull up the Higgins PowerPoint presentation? Is it up? Okay, there we go. Alright, thank you. So the final public hearing before you tonight for rezoning would be application number 31 Higgins/Regal. Case number is 2019-31. It was advertised in accordance with North County General Statutes and county code. The applicant is Ms. Rebecca Regal of Novel Life LLC. The owner is Glenn and Deborah Higgins. The address is 1854 Brevard Road. Subject property is 1.16 acres in size, one commercial structure, which I believe is currently used as a restaurant on the property. It's actually two properties being considered as one application, and the existing restaurant uses both properties right now for the building and the parking. And it is currently serviceable and is currently served by public water and sewer. This map gives you a potential before and after, so the current zoning is R2. The requested rezoning is EMP, as shown on the right-hand side. The R2, I've already, in my previous, in the previous hearing, I've explained the different, that district intent. It's really medium-density, single-family, and minor multifamily residential development. EMP is your, essentially your most intensive commercial zoning district slash industrial zoning district. It's a, it's a, an area to provide concentrations of employment, an area suitable for community service, commercial services, and residential uses along areas served by water and sewer and major transportation corridors. Very different range of allowable land uses, although similar to the previous rezoning. The, the property size requirements and setbacks are essentially the same. The big physical difference here is that we go from a maximum building height of thirty-five feet under the current zoning to a maximum building height of ninety feet under, under EMP. Perspectives from different directions, this is looking north, and you can see that north of this property, it's a pretty heavily-developed combination of multifamily housing and light manufacturing-type land uses. To the south, this photograph is not as up-to-date as, as one would hope. If you, you see those roads to the south and the east of the property, that's actually a fairly sizable apartment complex. The map, the aerial imagery has not caught up to the ground yet.
Go back, please.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Looking west, again, you can see that continuation of that, that manufacturing land use pattern to the west and the north. East. Land use analysis, this actually meets every single one of your criteria.
Can we go back to the map a minute?
Yes, sir. Sorry.
So I'm trying to orient myself. Robert, help me out here.
This is from Jay Crew.
Right.
A little coffee house with a long cameras.
Oh, okay, got it. Thanks.
It does meet all of your criteria under the land use plan. Recommendations, the planning board recommends approval by unanimous vote, as does staff. Happy to take any questions.
So, why would it be, what's the difference between EMP and commercial as far as building height?
EMP is, is, is both commercial and manufacturing in terms of its intent, what it's trying to serve. So it covers a range of things from restaurants all the way through, you know, small factories that might produce products such as paper. So in, in your industrial land uses that are contemplated, some of those uses require taller structures for part of the manufacturing process. Also, it allows for multi-story, mixed-use residential and commercial buildings. So it is your most intensive district, and it allows for any type of land use that might need to go to that height.
Yeah, that whole area is blowing up right through there.
Yes, sir.
Ninety feet, there's nothing else out that way, ninety feet.
No.
Saying there's nothing else ninety feet high out that way. I mean, a lot of commercial, but, you know.
That's correct.
Thirty, thirty-five feet is probably max.
Right. It, it, so, so the ninety feet again represents a, a potential. So if, if a land use were to want to locate in anywhere in the county that's EMP-zoned, and they needed that ninety feet, they would be allowed to do that by right. I can't think of a single use in the county unless you're factoring in, you know, smoke stacks and things like that that might be tied to a use that go to that height. Probably the only thing I could actually think of would might be the Duke Energy Facility with the, the steam discharge stacks on, on that property. Beyond that, I, Nick, can you think of anything else?
Yeah, that kind of, that ninety feet kind of bothers me a little bit. I'm wondering why that's.
Sure. So to put that in context, if you look historically at what EMP did, and that is gonna be your traditional manufacturing, you might have a specialized industry. So for instance, I'm gonna give you one in Tennessee, Alcoa Aluminum. And Alcoa Aluminum has a very odd, and this is in Alcoa, Tennessee, they have a very odd appurtenance that goes up, where the rest of the building is flat. Those are to accommodate these large coils of aluminum that have such a tall height that they need an appurtenance such as that. The ninety feet is really there if an industry were to come, that it's available to them, but it's not necessarily meaning that they would go to that height. Another piece of information on this particular property, this actually corrects what has been a non-conforming use, meaning one that doesn't, really should not be in a residential district. They're, under a non-conforming use, that means that they're limited in their expansion ability. So if the restaurant wanted to expand or create a new parking area or something to that effect, they would be very limited. If this was approved, this would allow them to expand the restaurant or change the parking lot, things of that nature. So what we have to do, though, is look at the surrounding zoning districts and find a district that matches. Well, the employment was pretty much all around it, so that's why we had to consider that district.
Alright, any other questions right now?
No, I'd just be a whole lot more worried about a ninety-foot-high building than I would two or three tiny homes in my backyard. I mean, that's, that's one of the challenges you got when you're talking about, you know, zoning, you won't, you know, we paint that whole EMP brush and included in that isn't, is a potential for a ninety-foot building on the, I know they're not gonna do that, but, on the front of the, you know, on that main highway. Anyhow, I'll get off my soapbox.
Right, but, I mean, we're talking about 1.16 acres. They, there ain't no commercial land going on that if they build any size building, so there's no parking to go with it, right?
Yeah, but, but remember, Mr. Presley, we're not voting on what they're actually gonna, we don't know what they're gonna be able to do. Right?
That's, that's true.
That was a conversation earlier, it's the same thing.
They could build anything that is allowed.
They can build a ninety-foot-high building if, if we vote yes for this.
Correct.
That's exactly what they can do, so we gotta, we gotta remember that when we're looking at this. We gotta be consistent. When we're going from, you know, one thing to the other, so.
And that's probably a good point to make as we move forward with strategic planning and long-range planning.
Absolutely.
And start looking at what we might wanna see in a comprehensive plan as we look to how we're gonna develop the county in the future.
Well, I mean, I think you, you know, and I, I hope I'm gonna get off my soapbox, but, you know, as far, to me, a ninety-foot building is more of an exception, and there ought to be a way to deal with an exception instead of it being included in all this, you know, this EMP, to me. You know, I mean, it falls into, I guess it's conditional use, is that it?
So probably what happened was at the time, so zoning turns ten years old in December, and at the time, probably, we looked at the county, we found an instance where there might have been a ninety-foot section of a building, a smoke stack, something to that effect, and so it was just captured at that height, but we could certainly examine that when we move forward with our strategic and our comprehensive planning in terms of what we might wanna, how we might wanna adjust some of the districts moving forward.
Did, did you say commercial could do a ninety-foot also, or just EMP?
Yeah, so, so EMP, thank you. EMP allows a broad range of uses, everything from residential through virtually any type of commercial you could think of. EMP allows a broad range of uses, everything from residential through virtually any type of commercial you could think of all the way to some of your heaviest manufacturing. So, so an example, manufacturing would be like mining, coal mining, or, you know, rock quarrying, things like that. Sometimes you have larger processing structures that might creep up above your thirty-five-foot level. That's one example. That would actually require a conditional use permit. On the commercial range, yeah, you could, in theory, if you could, you'd have to probably match this parcel up with other properties around it to get enough acreage to make it work. But, in theory, you could do a ninety-foot-tall mixed-use residential commercial building. And, again, in theory, I don't think you could do it on this property given the acreage, but in combination with other lands, it is a possibility.
Okay, thanks.
Let's open the public hearing at six fifty-three P M. Mr. Yelton, would you like to speak?
Look at that, I made it without my cane.
Hey, good job.
Don't get off of that, Joe, because we have discovered something here today. I, we talked about this when zoning was done countywide. How can you pass a plan and put it down on a piece of paper that works ten years down the road? There is a simple solution to everything that you all have faced tonight. And I'm going to give it to you. I've been showing you problems for twenty years, but you didn't listen until some people got arrested. So, maybe I need to put a suit on and take my hat off, you might listen, but I'm not going to. I'll just tell you the truth. All you need to do is to pass a rule that you can do zoning based upon a site plan. Just like tonight, that couple could immediately said, okay, we'll agree to two other, two other lots there, and that's it. That's all we'll do. Why can't you do that here? Why not? This ninety-foot, why can't you approve this zoning so they can increase the rest if they want to without the ninety-foot? You are the governing body of Buncombe County. You have that power and that right. Are you afraid to use it? I think you are. Because if you use common sense, you may tick somebody off. But, we have exposed that tonight right here in this meeting. I've heard it. You can't do a site plan until you got the zoning to match. Now, you want to get in, well, we'll do a comprehensive. So, we'll get around the table and contemplate the lint in their belly button for two years before we'll do the comprehensive plan and waste everybody's time. Think about it, Joe, don't get off that.
All right, anyone else? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing at six fifty-five. Further discussion, or is there a motion? I make a motion to approve the proposed request as consistent with the county's land use plan, not adversely affecting adjoining property enters and meeting a number of our land use goals. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I make the motion to rezone to EMP.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Josh, thanks, and Nate, thanks so much for your, your help on all these items. Okay. We are at the county manager's report. Anything you would like to share, Ms. Pender?
Just real quickly, just want to say thank you to the board and to the staff for the time we spent last week, the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth, on our plan for strategic planning. We will come back to you next meeting at eight-twenty to give you a preliminary draft for what we have and to give you an update. So, in our pre-meeting on the twentieth, we'll be back to you again on next steps to the strategic plan.
All right, great. Okay, the next item on our agenda is consideration of the Old Haywood Road Neighborhood Phase One Development. And Matt Cable will start us off on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present this information to you this evening. I'll be brief with an introduction to the item and then invite Andy Barnett, the Executive Director of Asheville Area Habitat for Humanity, to speak and describe in detail the project. But, basically, the recommendation that is before you is to authorize a community, community development loan agreement and enter into and execute the associated promissory note and deed of trust for the Old Haywood Road Neighborhood Phase One Development. This is the second award that would have been considered for this project. The first having been a prior approved award through the Affordable Housing Services Program. The funding for this project was included in the FY two thousand twenty budget. And with that, I will turn it over to Andy Barnett and have the presentation pulled up for you so that he can walk you through the details of the project. And then, I'll provide some closing information to the board as well.
Good evening, Commissioner Newman, Chairman Newman, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to present on this project tonight. I'd like to start by thanking the board for really showing some bold leadership around affordable housing, both in the creation of the Affordable Housing Subcommittee and in the budget allocation for affordable housing this year, funding much-needed housing for families across the, the income spectrum in, in Buncombe County, all different types of housing. So, I appreciate your leadership there. We all know that can't come at a, at a more critical time. I won't dig into all of the statistics because you know them as well as I do, but I'll just remind us all that tonight, one in six of our neighbors are spending half or more of their paycheck to, to keep a roof over their head. It's, it's critical for us to continue to be bold in the way we move forward in providing housing in this community. And Habitat is trying to be a part of that, trying to join you in, in moving forward boldly. For the last thirty-six years, we've been very successful at perfecting a path to homeownership for folks who might otherwise be denied that part of the American dream. We work as both the builder and the bank. And by pairing those two things up, we're able to help folks who would otherwise not be able to qualify for conventional, conventional home mortgage lending to be able to be successful as homeowners. And so, what we want to do in, at this, at this newest neighborhood is to really take that to a bigger scale than we have ever done before. So, this is our largest and most ambitious neighborhood project to date. It's twenty acres off of Old Haywood Road, just west of the city limits of, of the city of Asheville. When this entire development is complete, it will be home to almost a hundred of our neighbors. It's a great, it's a great site. It's a beautiful setting and a very convenient setting, as you can see from the, from the map on the screen. And what we're trying to do in this site is to really expand the type of housing that Habitat is building so that more, more of the different kinds of families in Buncombe County that struggle with affordable housing can find a great fit for, for a home for themselves. So, this, this site will be a, a mix of single-family, of townhomes, of some units particularly oriented for, for older adults. It's just really a great opportunity for us to, to make sure that we're providing our services across the broadest part of the county that we possibly can. We got underway on this back in the spring. We are deep into what is an extensive site development phase on this project. Again, it's a twenty-acre project. We'll be extending roads, sewer, doing quite a bit of grading to make sure that this fits in with the topography of the, of the surrounding area. And this first phase gets built out over the next few years, completed in two thousand twenty-three. This is a, this first phase of, of this total project is thirty-eight, will be thirty-eight homes. It's about a seven million dollar Phase One of about a fifteen million dollar total project. And what we're asking the board to consider tonight is providing six hundred and eighty thousand dollars to, to help make sure these units remain affordable to folks below eighty percent of area median income. But, I will say that Habitat's typical, typical borrower, typical homeowner is well below sixty percent of area median income. So, we leave ourselves some room because we want to intentionally have some, have some income integration within this neighborhood. But, we are targeting and continue to target folks who have the greatest barriers to homeownership. So, we'd ask for your consideration for, for this, and I'm, can hand this back to, to Matt, but we'll leave you with a reminder that the, one of the great things about affordable homeownership is that you get property taxes back from this to the tune of about sixty thousand dollars a year from Phase One alone. So, this will pay itself back in, in just under twelve years. But, we don't do it for that reason. We do it because we know that when families are safe and stably housed, it increases the, the health and economic vitality of our community. It's better for kids and school. It's better for all of the, sort of sets the foundation for all the great things that we want for, for our neighbors in Buncombe County. So, we do it for that reason. And with that, I'll turn it back to Matt. Thank you.
All right. And I have a couple more slides here that I'll review with you. And they detail the existing approved loan. So, as I mentioned at the beginning, this project did receive Affordable Housing Services Program funding through the FY nineteen allocations process. Habitat did request more funds than were allocated, but of course, as those projects are considered, we balance out the various requests. And the amount that was awarded was two hundred and, excuse me, two hundred and forty thousand dollars for that project. That included a construction loan portion, so that portion is a repayable loan as well as down payment assistance loan. And the way that those funds work, as the Affordable Housing Committee members can attest, we've gone through this a lot to make sure that it's really clear. But, those are loans, but they function more like a grant in that as long as the home remains in an affordable capacity, meaning if it's sold to another property owner, that that owner falls within that affordability threshold, it's not a repayable loan. And so, it would only, those funds would only come back in the event that it was sold to someone who fell outside of the thresholds, meeting that affordability standard. And so, for those first twenty-four units, there was an award that provided a three thousand three hundred dollar down payment assistance. So, the request that was brought back for this project was for an additional six hundred and eighty thousand eight hundred dollars in funding. That would be all in the form of down payment assistance. So, the first twenty-four units would have additional funding of sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars per unit available for a total of twenty thousand dollars in support for the first units, one through twenty-four, with another twenty thousand dollars per unit in support for units twenty-five through thirty-eight. The project was taken before the Affordable Housing Committee, who made a positive recommendation to bring this before the board for consideration and approval. Your packet, as I mentioned, does include the community development loan agreement and provides a detailed scope as the attachment to that agreement. It's our standard agreement. That agreement was prepared by County Legal and has been reviewed by Habitat for Humanity as an acceptable form to them as well, should the board take action and decide to move forward on this item. I certainly would be happy to answer any questions you may have, as I'm sure Andy would as well.
All right, thanks, Matt. Commissioners, any questions? Or is there a motion to approve the FY two thousand twenty loan request of six hundred eighty thousand eight hundred dollars?
So moved.
Second.
Are there, are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion? Yes, sir.
Retired preacher, what can I say? An open mic is just too much of a temptation when it's something I'm passionate about. I referred earlier to my growing up in West Asheville. Technically, I realize this is outside the city limit, but it's awfully close. And if you pass this, there's going to be more reason to say, well, West Asheville used to be affordable and most of it still isn't, but right outside the city limit, there's some possibilities. So, that excites me, and I throw in my two cents worth for that reason.
All right, thank you.
I think it's inside the city limit.
Well, so, let's clarify that. It's actually, is, is all of the property outside the city limits, or is part of it inside the city limits?
This project actually falls within the former extraterritorial jurisdiction. Interestingly enough, the road to access it is city-maintained.
Okay, but all of the new development will be outside the municipal limits?
Yes.
Okay. But, but it's right, it's right on. It's close, it's really close. All right. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I'm not the kind of preacher you are, okay? But, I preach about something else.
God has many points.
Well, I see two hundred thousand up here on the MCCF, which that was two thousand nineteen, but we heard it was two thousand twenty. And then, I see six hundred and eighty thousand here. And I saw two million go to Swanon Noah. So, you know what my question is, which will be addressed? What line item does the six hundred and eighty come from? And how much more is in reserve there for affordable housing? So, that we can monitor how many dollars we put in affordable housing. So, that's my question. I think they should be given, and those answers should be given publicly.
All right, thanks. Anyone else? All right, great. Bring it back to the commission. We have a motion in a second to approve the loan agreement. Further discussion?
I've watched this go down for a long time. I know people that have homes that's for affordable housing, basically in West Asheville and other areas, that charge two hundred dollars less for rent than people that are in affordable housing business. It's not affordable anymore. There's, you know, I've heard this going for years and years. We can't make it affordable. Habitat's making a killing. You don't go buy a building from a person for a million one, and you don't have any money. They do a great job. They build some homes. Now, we got one deal for two point two million that's building apartments. As Commissioners, we all want people to have a good place to live. I do. I want kids to have a, a good place to try to come up. But, we have to back up and, in my eyes, and look at where we're at. This is a year after year after year coming forward. Two thousand and twenty, we're setting stuff for two thousand and twenty. I can't help it that, you know, mountain housing got in here and got two point two million. And then, we tried to figure out how that we could make it for mountain housing and homeward bound to be able to get some money off the backside of that. Call it a loan, call it anything you want to call it. All it is is the taxpayers' money. Goes back to the same thing again. Little man's wanting to know if he can still have peanut butter and jelly sandwich together. Are we taking his jelly away from him? Most likely, we are in certain ways, so. Until we can figure out, not just with the nonprofit walking through the door, how that we can make something work as it should. Because there is people in this county that rent homes, and I don't know if Don's is close or not, but they rent them for less than what people were paying down here. Two hundred dollars less than the people are paying on Eagle Street. They'll be two hundred dollars less than the ones in Swanon Noah. And that's affordable? These people are business people that pay taxes on the money that they take in from their apartments, let's call them. We don't call them affordable, but they're just apartments. Can they go up on the rent and call it affordable? I'm just not going to vote for any of this now until we can figure out what is affordable. who's, how the rent stabilizes, who's charging what rent. We've got people here that make a living, a good living, with $200 less a month, and they actually, some of them furnish the water and the sewer. So, you know. Habitat, you do a great job. You're just a little behind in mountain housing. Mountain housing hasn't given me any information that I've asked for. You know, Habitat, you know, we give all kinds of money to fix people's homes up. We give it to everybody to fix people's homes up. How many homes has been fixed up? I've still got a card sitting up here waiting for an answer. Don't have an answer. But we only give them a quarter million dollars a year to do it with. So until I see some answers, I won't vote for not one more dime of this, because we have people that make less money renting property than we do with the people that don't pay taxes, don't pay property taxes on the building down on the river, don't pay any property taxes, and up here wanting more money out of the taxpayer. I'm sorry.
All right, thanks so much. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you very much. We, this is a, this is a great project. We really appreciate everything you guys are doing, and we're glad to be a partner in this project. It does provide permanent affordable homeownership for working families in our community. It does pay taxes. So it's a great, it's a great project, and we're excited that you brought it to us, and we look forward to hearing about it as it moves forward. So thanks, thanks so much for all of your great work with the Habitat team. All right, next up is the FY 20 Budget Amendment Summary on the Reams Creek Greenway Project, and Jennifer Barnett will present this item.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. So this evening, we bring one new business budget amendment item before you. On June 19th, 2018, the board approved a general fund transfer amount, which included $60,000 committed for the Reams Creek Greenway Project. The $60,000 is an already budgeted county match for the Reams Creek Greenway Project. We all, we have a need to budget the remainder of the cost of that project to bring it to a total of $600,000. Today, we are bringing to you a request to approve a budget amendment that establishes the remainder of the project expense dollars, as well as the revenues totaling $540,000 each. Buncombe County has been awarded $480,000 from the North Carolina Department of Transportation, and the town of Weaverville has additionally committed $60,000 to the project. These two amounts total the remaining $540,000 needed. No additional county dollars are required at this time. I'd like to provide a moment for Josh O'Connor to give you a little bit of information around what would be kind of the immediate next steps for the project, before we request for you to move to a vote.
So I just wanted to briefly run you through next steps on the project. Following your approval tonight, this will start the process of an agreement with North Carolina Department of Transportation. We'll then use North Carolina Department of Transportation's local project management tool to coordinate with them, which will include us seeking out qualified contractors to initiate design on the project. We anticipate that we'll be able to start that within the next three to six months, hopefully on the quicker end. This will allow us to engage that, that process. We will work within CDOT to put out a set of bid specifications and then receive qualified bidders through their process and then go through design. The timeline for design is at least 12 months, and at that point, we should have documents that are relatively close to construction ready so that the town of Weaverville can pursue additional funding to actually pursue construction of the Greenway. So if there are any questions, I can attempt to answer those at this time. Thank you.
All right, there's any? Okay. So the action needed is the budget amendment.
Yes, and that would be to budget the revenues due to be received of $540,000, which would then also offset the expenditure budget in the same amount.
And the county expense is 60,000?
Yes, sir. And it's already been budgeted.
Yes. So I'll move approval.
Second.
All right, there's a motion in a second to support the budget amendment for the Reams Creek Greenway Project in Weaverville. Any members of the public wish to comment?
Yeah, can't pass up that opportunity. DOT giving money for greenways with the streets in the shape they are in this area? I just want that registered and recorded in this public hearing. That is asinine, folks. Putting that kind of money when there's a hole in the Reams Creek Bridge that constantly has been falling through for about eight years. This little hole develops in the bridge, goes down about two inches, two inches, two inches, they'll fill it, goes down again. You doubt me, go out there and ride across the bridge. And if you ride across after they fix it, it's spoo. If you ride across when it's on the way down, it's a boom, boom. So I think DOT needs some information, and I will be talking to our local delegation. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you so much. All right, we come to our board appointments.
So I'd like to make a motion for the reappointment. Leah Ashburn on the Tourism TDA Board, I serve on that board. She's been a, been a very good member of that board and, and done a great job.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint the following four individuals to the Health and Human Services Board. Carol Coulson, Rick Ellenberg, Rick Munger, and Stephen Valeka.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, on HRC, there's one vacancy. There's four folks who have applied.
Hi, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I mean, this is really important, you know, here, and I'd like to have time to look over these applications before we make that decision, if we've got four and just one.
Should we, would people like to interview the applicants? Or simply have some more time to review the applicants?
I think we could read up.
What are, what are folks' thoughts? I know some of these folks, some of these folks I don't know, so.
I mean, I don't have a problem interviewing them, that's what you want to do. I mean, I know the Historic Resource Commission has made one recommendation, but, you know, I, I don't know, that may be the best one, I'm not sure.
Any other comments on whether, would you guys like to do interviews or just vote on this at the next meeting? Any preference?
I could take a look at.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else want to advocate for interviews? If not, we're going to just reschedule this one for the next meeting? All right, we'll just move this one to the next meeting. All right. Okay, so we come to public comment. The time limit for individual members to, during this part of public comment is three minutes. Any members of the public who wish to comment? All right, got a couple of announcements. August 20th at 12:00 PM, the Commissioners will hold their pre, actually, we are going to change this, right? We have to do this one at this time.
We have to do.
We, we are going to change the time for our pre-meetings, but the next one will be at the, will still be at the noon time. So that'll be August 20th at noon, at, on the first floor of 200 College Street, in the conference room in downtown Asheville. The Commission earlier today discussed changing the time for that meeting in future meetings that will be held at 3 o'clock here in the regular Commission chambers. But the next meeting will still be at noon on the first floor. And then on August 20th at 5:00 PM, the Commissioners will then hold their regular meeting at 5:00 PM here in Room 326 in downtown Asheville. We do have a need for a closed session to discuss two items, and who can tell us about what the reasons are? Heather?
Actually, there's three items.
Okay.
Yes. All of them will be under 1331811A3. To consult with an attorney employed by, or retained by the public body in order to preserve attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged. And two of them have case references that I need to get into the record. The first one will be RAB Builders LLC versus Buncombe County, and the case number is NC Court of Appeals, number 192-204. The next one is RAB LLC Buncombe versus Buncombe County and Buncombe County BOA, and that's 19CV182. And then lastly, we have Irene Warren Kent Administratics of the Estate of Michelle Quantel Smiley versus Van Duncan in his official capacity as Sheriff of Buncombe County and Western Surety Company as surety, and that case site is 18CV322.
All right, is there a motion to go into a closed session to discuss those items?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We will re-adjourn. We do not expect to take any further actions when we come out of closed session. We expect to simply adjourn at that time. We're in closed session.